Good evening.
Good evening.
Are we there?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 3, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Yes, President, our Selectman Slavin, Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Troppiano, Chairman Whiteside, Clerk Titlebaum, and Town Administrator Sullivan.
Thank you. May I have Mr. White lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... one of the three people in the room. ... two flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Announcements, I'm going to start to my left with Mr. Slavin.
Okay. I was asked to re-explain again the Route 6 and 28 construction project coming to Wareham. The project is for 2018-2019. It's a little confusing for a lot of people because we have a fiscal calendar year and a calendar year. One starts on July 1st, the other one starts January 1st. So 2018, which technically starts July 1 of 2017 and ends June 30th, half the project, a little over $9 million, will be done during that period. I have a meeting in two weeks from today with MOP, which MassDOT will be there, and I will get a timeframe of when they actually think they're going to start the project. And the same thing will happen the following year. I'm also going to try and get an idea of how they're going to do the project, whether they're going to do the takings and move electrical and power lines, and whether they're going to dig up the road or do the road at the last piece or whatever. What I think we should do as a board, once we get this information, is to, at least myself and Mrs. Whiteside, depending who else is available, visit each retail or wholesale business, whatever there is on the highway, and let them know exactly what's happening when so they can plan. If business gets disturbed, in my opinion, for two or three months alone, with the economy is still very tight, it's difficult today to make money and survive. Everybody is really at the break-even point a lot of times. If you run three months and your business really falls off because people can't get to you, et cetera, it could be a death knell for certain businesses, so we need to help our merchants and give them a head of stuff warning. So that's where that stands, and in two weeks I'll give you finite information. Thank you.
Thank you. Can that be posted on the website when you do get more finite dates?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that it?
The only other thing is, we got a, the beacon came today which confirmed the, some of the information I put on the letter that we did not send to the governor on the marijuana law. We need to add to our meeting next week two items, whether we decide we want to put them on the town meeting warrant. One of them has to do with the 20 percent of, basically, based on the number of local licenses you have, you can restrict the 20 percent. We can't do that unless it's done by a vote of the voters. We also can't restrict, if we wanted to delay a little bit on our own, we can't do that unless we do like we did before back in 2012 when we actually voted to delay by one year moratorium, and that came out again officially a couple days ago. The, I'll be straightforward, I don't think either one will pass a town meeting, though. The voters, I don't think are going to sit there and go for either one, but it depends what you want to do. But the bottom line is, if we don't do the 20 percent thing, it means they can have as many retailers as they want.
I don't think that's true.
No, it is. It's in, it's in the beacon if you read it.
Well, but I mean, I've read the law, and the law that was passed clearly says that it's 20 percent. It's written right in the, right in the law.
I'm just letting you know what we got in the information today.
Well, I, I think it's wrong. I don't think that's correct. I'll, I'll look at it again, but I read the whole thing specifically before it even passed, and the 20 percent rule was part of the law. So I know they delayed it now for six months, right?
Six months, yep.
They delayed it for six months. I don't know how that's going to help them, but six months is what they've been doing.
Well, the reason they're doing that is, and they're probably going to do it very quickly, is they've already, the House and Senate, the chairs have already stated that the first thing they're going after is the percentages.
The money, right?
Because the percentages were done really low. Everybody has to realize that this whole piece, which is fine, that's if people want, it's not a problem, but this was written by the industry, for the industry, and the Attorney General appoints three members to the Cannabis Control Commission.
Right.
Those three members are from the industry. So in a very simple word is, you have the fox guarding the hen house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scasiotti?
Just the Memorial Day Board that we put up here, of the...
Could you be a little bit more explicit?
Well, just...
Thank you.
Just all the, you know, the parade and the time afterwards, Mr. Minkle.
Minkle.
Minkle, yeah. It was a really nice parade, very well-covered, very well-done. Thank you. Mr. Troppiano?
I just want to say one thing. We continue to have a great deal of overdoses in this town, and as you know, as everybody knows, the governor just cut the budget, and one of the things he cut out was some of that money. And it's very sad, because I had a friend who I did some work with, 26-years-old, and Christmas Day he OD'd and passed away. And this is, it's really so out of control, it's even crazy. I mean, this is just, I mean, young kids just dying by the carloads, and we've had them, you know, three, four a day sometimes, and it's just very sad, and I don't know, if, if there's somebody out there, don't, don't, don't ignore it, don't put your head under the, you know, like an ostrich in the sand. You know, confront them, get somebody to help them, do something. I think a lot of times people, you know, try to keep status quo, try not to ruffle feathers or whatever, but I'm going to tell you, if you don't get in the way of these people to help them, they're, they're not going to help themselves. And they need help. I mean, this is serious. This is a disease that is killing people. And, you know, if you saw somebody who was sick, you'd certainly make sure they got services. Well, they're sick, and they need services. So anything you can do, don't be afraid to do it. Secondly, I want to talk about, I was driving down Indian Neck, yes, today, this morning, and I was a little scared to drive down that road, I don't know about you, but there were a few trees that came down, right, a week ago in a storm. And believe it or not, I'm looking at the trees along the edge on the, before you get to, before you make the turn to go to, what do you call it there, Parkwood?
Yep.
Right? Just from, from the beginning to there.
Yep.
There's a lot of dead trees right along that edge, and I mean, they're dead. We, we need to get this to the Minot Forest Committee. Can't they do something about that? Because I got to tell you, those trees, I, I was afraid driving by them, that's, you know, the wind's not going to take one and drop it on my car. I mean, there's some pretty serious number of, of these trees, and you can see, they're all white, they've turned white because they're so dead.
That's the red pines.
And they're ready to come down, and they're right on the edge of that road, and I think we ought to do something about that, or at least send something to them, and maybe even the town administrator can...
And also, yeah, Mr. Menard as well.
Can send somebody by to take a peek and see what we can do about that.
Great.
Find some grants or some money or something.
Yeah, the tree warden is the director of municipal maintenance, so that's...
Okay, so we'll send the tree warden over there or whatever, because I'm concerned. I'm concerned because I drive by them all the time, might be a little selfish, but, you know.
Just for, just for information, the, we did about, I think it's a year, a year and a half ago, Derek, the Minot Forest Committee hired the forestry guy to take care of all the red pines.
Four years ago.
Yeah. Well, it took them a couple of years to finish the project. And you, unfortunately, red pines don't belong here, they were planted here by error, and they've all died everywhere.
They were planted here by the Boy Scouts.
And the ones along the road, they didn't touch because the project was to go in a little ways and clear it out, and you have some that are along the road, and they just eventually have gone too.
Okay.
He was supposed to go in there, it was at no cost because he would take the pulp, and it did not work for him financially at all.
No, it didn't work really well either.
Yep.
But that's the...
We will, thank you.
That's, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes. Transfer stations and beach stickers are now available at the Harbor Masters office, which is open Monday, 8:30 to 4 o'clock, Monday through Friday, so 8:30 to 4, you can go in there and get your stickers. Bring your registration with you, they won't give it to you without the registration, which means you'll have to make a second trip back to your car.
And they have a pictured ID, too, I believe.
Yeah. I think actually they do prefer...
It says in the list, yeah.
Just your license.
Bring your license and your registration with you. Also, it's time to renew your dog licenses, and that's at the town clerk's office. The fees are $10 for an altered dog and $13 for a dog with original equipment.
And seniors?
Seniors get a break, I forget what the rate is, but...
It's one free and then over. One dog free.
Yeah, I'm not there yet, so I don't get that break.
I think they take credit cards in there now, too, right? But there's a fee?
No.
I think for any, anything in town, you can use a credit card, but there is a fee.
There's a fee, though, right?
Three percent.
Yeah. And lastly, a couple of weeks ago, a local guy, he's been here all his life, named Matt Pearl, he was hunting legally, by the way, not in the town forest, as I've heard some rumors spread. He was actually on private land in a tree stand that was allowed to be there. Somebody vandalized the tree stand on him, and he fell down and suffered some back injuries, broke his back. He's a carpenter by trade, he's going to be out of work for probably six to nine months while he heals, so somebody has set up a GoFundMe page, so if you go to GoFundMe.com and look for Matthew Pearl, it's P-E-A-R-L-E, Pearl with an E at the end, perhaps people can help him out, his family out while he's unable to work and support his family.
He's got a nice family, his kids are great ballplayers, I've had them in baseball.
Thank you. You're all set?
Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of things, I was going to remind you about the dog licenses. Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, obviously. I, I want to also reinforce what Mr. Troppiano has said. Having been a schoolteacher in the high school here, doesn't matter where I was a schoolteacher, I have had the misfortune of having several of my previous students who were in the 10th grade die since I have retired from teaching. They were not yet 26, not that that makes any difference, but I got to tell you, when you sit with somebody for a year, or if you have taken them under your wing, or even if you just know their face, they are a human being, and it is an illness. Mr. Troppiano serves on our opioid committee, I can't remember the full name of it.
It's a long one.
It's a long one, it goes on and on and on. But they're gathering statistics for the committee members. I would urge members of the public to attend those meetings and to take a very active stance against this epidemic which is killing the next generation.
Can I say one more thing?
No. Yes.
Okay. I want to, I meant to thank Mr. Sullivan, because, you know, we had a wicked cold spell there, although you'd never know it now, just a week or so ago, two weeks ago, whatever it was, before Christmas, and the shelters were not going to open until, until the 26th. And Mr. Sullivan was able to set up some bus service and stuff for the homeless to get them to a shelter so that none of them had to stay outside in the cold with serious temperatures. I mean, there was a minus-four-degree temperature, which, you know, if you sleep in that, you're just dead. And I have to thank him very much for doing that. I know of one, one member who went there, and he, he thought it was terrific. I mean, it was, it's a nice place, because they have a lot of services up there, because it's Father Bill's, and I think some of them actually have taken up the services. If you'll notice, the shelter's been pretty empty here the last, since it opened. Usually it was 22, and now there's a smaller number, so maybe that helped them to get some help and some services, so I want to thank you very much for setting that up, and it's really appreciated.
Thank you. I also want to let the public know that each one of, of us has our own special things that we really like to tag-team on. Mr. Slavin is our transportation, and we call him our foreign services, Selectman, but he is on a lot of boards and committees that have to do with regional as well as statewide transportation. He, he's on the Board of Directors of several things, so I don't know when he sleeps, but he is one of the busiest men I know. Mr. Scasiotti has also taken on being a liaison for several of our boards and commissions. He has a background certainly in the town, and I'm not sure which one he may end up glomming onto, but we're looking forward to him having a real favorite. Mr. Troppiano, I've already spoken about his connection to, on, and his commitment to the opioid, opioid crisis here in Wareham, as well as other boards and committees that he's on, he's our resident expert on sewage. Yeah, I know.
That's a PhD.
Yeah, PhD of crap.
The, Mr. Titlebaum has just regularly been working with Madam Moderator as well as Town Council to get our town meeting warrants and the motions and everything done well ahead of time, and so that, that is, you know, not messy and not, you know, not a problem anymore. My own little project for this year is working to get the Lopes Field rebuilt. I'm seeing a lot of comments that people use it a lot, and there is a group called CORE, which is a 501(c)(3), which is accepting donations, and we will, I will continue to be a liaison to them and let the public know that I think, hopefully, this coming October, the current playground will be taken down, and there will be a brand-new one there. One other thing, there was an article in, maybe the Huffington Post, I can't remember where it was, but it was about a campground in Oregon where the homeless are put up in, in sheds, and there's a central bathroom and central, you know, kitchen kind of thing. One of the comments on the article was, what would it take to have this done in Wareham? I talked briefly with Mr. Titlebaum, who is one of the experts in terms of, you know, zoning and housing and that kind of thing, it's only because you weren't available, Mr. Slavin, but because of the laws and because of the, and you were not available, too, the laws about building and codes, that kind of operation simply is not a viable or feasible thing for the town to be involved in, nor a 501(c)(3) or a church group or something like that. It just simply wouldn't work.
You're in the wrong state for that kind of stuff.
Exactly. So while it's a great idea, that's not going to be one of the solutions that we come up with. And other than that, I'm all set. Citizens' participation, seeing none, we'll move on to appointments and reappointments. I have been asked by the Chair of the Recycling Committee to hold that one off for a week, so may I have a motion?
Move to table, to a future date.
Second.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Mr. Scasiotti to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining, it is unanimous. Oh, I forgot to mention, the only person here who's not plugged in is Mr. Titlebaum.
So I don't need to be.
All of us, all of us have our agendas and all of the copies of the documents on our pet, what are these things called?
iPads.
iPads. Well, see, I'm the one who's...
Thing-majiggy.
The thing-majig, okay?
New widgets.
We have, this is part of the Whiteside, I am not ever going to file 400 billion pounds of paper again. So it works really well. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Next items, vote to establish dates for April 2017 town meeting and notice of intent. Do you want me to do this?
Please.
Speed reading thing here?
Yes, please.
Okay, first is the process for calling the annual, Spring Annual Town Meeting. Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. Process for calling 2017 Spring Annual Town Meeting, April 4, 2017, Elections, April 24, 2017, General Business. Tuesday, January 3, 2017, Board of Selectmen should establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the annual town meeting. Monday, February 6, 2017, last day to submit all articles except for citizens' petition articles to be inserted in the warrant. Friday, February 3, 2017, last day to post in at least one public place in each precinct the notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the annual town meeting for April 4, 2017. That's pursuant to Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 3, which is 10 days' notice by posting in precincts before the warrant closes. Thursday, February 9, 2017, last day to submit citizens' petition articles and all other articles to be inserted in the warrant. That's pursuant to the Wareham Home Rule Charter at Section 2-4(c), which is 45 days before the town meeting convenes. Tuesday, February 14, 2017, Board of Selectmen should officially close the warrant. Friday, February 17, 2017, last day to post in each precinct and deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator and to the chairman of each committee established by Section 2-5 of the Wareham Home Rule Charter. That's pursuant to the Wareham Home Rule Charter at Section 2-4d, within three days of closing of warrant. Tuesday, February 21, 2017, it's the last day to submit to the Finance Committee articles included in the warrant. That's pursuant to Wareham Bylaws, Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, no later than 35 days before town meeting convenes. To, Thursday, March 9, 2017, is the last day to publish the entire warrant in a local newspaper pursuant to Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4d, which is 14 days before the town meeting. Tuesday, April 4, 2017, commencement of the annual town meeting on Election Day. That's pursuant to Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is the first Tuesday of April. Monday, April 24, 2017, is the general business portion of town meeting. That's pursuant to Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is the fourth Monday of April. So those are the dates for getting town meeting going.
These dates have been checked by myself, by the clerk, by Madam Moderator, and by Town Council.
Is that a motion? No, there's no...
No, that was just reading that into, that was just reading that into the record for...
Those are just into the record, yeah.
Read it separately.
Yep. Okay, now the notice, please.
Yeah, right, the notice does require a second. I'll read, I'll speed read this one. Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. Notice 2017 Annual Spring Town Meeting, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from the Shire Town, to the elected constable of the Town of Wareham. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, according to provisions, Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the Bylaws of Town of Wareham. Abended, you are hereby directed to notify all the legal voters of Town of Wareham that annual town meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, April 4, 2017, for the election of offices and to be adjourned until 7:00 p.m. on Monday, April 24, 2017, at which time the general business of town meeting shall be transacted. The last day for submission of citizens' petitioned articles for insertion in the warrant is 5:00 p.m. Thursday, February 9, 2017. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, February 14, 2017, and you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting attested copies thereof in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, longer before February, Friday, February 3, 2017. Hereof fail not, make due return of this posting with the doings thereunto, the Town Clerk, given under our hands at Wareham this third day of January in the year 2017. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Judith Whiteside, Chairman, Peter W. Titlebaum, Clerk, Frac. G. Troppiano, Donnie S. Slavin, Anthony S. Scasiotti, Jr.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. And then next, we have, we have the acceptance of a donation, am I correct?
Accepting some money, right?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, next up, we have vote to accept donation, the amount of $1,000 to the Wareham Free Library. I move the Board of Selectmen accept the generous donation of $1,000 to the Wareham Free Library from Ronald and Alice Curtin, 388 Abbotsford Court, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Second.
Motion made, made, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Slavin to accept the generous donation of $1,000 for the library from Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Curtin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, the museum unanimous.
And thank you to the Curtins for this.
I think we have a letter, actually, to me. Okay.
Yeah, there's a letter to sign. Item C, tabling?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're awaiting some additional information on item C, so I move that we table item 7C to a future meeting.
Second, please. Seconded by Mr. Scasiotti. Motion made by Troppiano. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the museum unanimous. Any other business, Mr. Troppiano?
I have none.
Town Administrator's report, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year to everyone as well. I'd respectfully request that for the next agenda, we place the superintendent on to give a update for the Deacon School Project, if that'd be okay.
Would you, that's fine. Would you let Mrs. Wilson know that?
Yep.
Thank you.
I've also officially received from the School Department, the School Committee's budget request, which is an, an increase of $2,014,580. So I, I would request that, Madam Chair, that we meet and get together to go over these. It's, I mean, it's, I appreciate the hard work, as I said at that meeting, we just simply don't have that.
Right.
Right now, we don't have any of it, so I think there's a lot of hard work that needs to be done.
Thank you. I've given you the dates that I'm available. I've also asked Mr. Troppiano if we need to have an additional Selectman present to let you know, so thank you.
All right. And that's, that's it. We are in budget season. I do have to put forward a budget before the end or middle of this month. Any budget put forth at this time would be a balanced budget, so that's, that's what I would be bringing forward. And that is, that is it for the new year so far.
May I ask you one question about that statement, sir? The balanced budget?
You may.
Okay. Are you going to continue with the excellent fiscally responsible policies of not rating savings accounts and things like that to balance the budget?
We, we don't do that.
Thank you.
Not an option.
Thank you.
It's not an option.
Thank you. You all set with your reports, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Liaison reports, Mr. Slavin?
Basically, nobody met over the holiday week, two weeks, actually. I have one piece I'd like to bring forward to see if it's okay with the Board. Duxbury has put in place a regional dispatch, which they have four towns that are going to sign on, possibly at Fifth Rochester. I spoke with the Rochester Chairman of the Board and a few other people, and I'd like to basically speak to, in fact, actually, I already spoke to McDuffie, but speak to the Onze Fire Department, our police department, EMS, and make arrangements just to go up and see what Duxbury's put together and how they put, how they made it work, how they dealt with all the different union issues, et cetera, just to see what it is. What's happening with dispatch as of this particular timeframe, any grants to upgrade your dispatch or to do things are only really being considered if it's regional. And I think Duxbury's program, I believe either they've got or are getting a $4.7 million grant. Just as an example, I don't know how easy this is going to be to do or not do, it may not happen, but I, so far, I think the people that are involved are interested in at least looking and seeing what the information is and how it works. But again, from Rochester, the information they get back is their total cost for dispatch, everything is $400,000 a year. The contract that they would get from Duxbury is $150,000, which gives them $250,000 to put in other places that they need. So it's worth looking at. I don't know if we can make it work. We have a difficult enough time trying to get our two districts... We have a difficult enough time trying to get our two districts and the town to do it together on its own, but it's a good time. I know the Fire Department, I believe that Mr. Reedy, I think it is, there's a retirement coming who is in charge of dispatch, and as far as the Fire Department's concerned, it's a good time for them. I'm not asking us to go ahead and join in with Duxbury, because our numbers, I think, probably exceed everybody's. Plymouth is by a lot. Plymouth is seriously considering going, but there is some discussions, I think, at least on the Police Department side, about not being that happy about doing it, but the town itself is. So, let me, I'd like to just go ahead and bring the people up to sit and just, it's just an informational thing, see what it is, how they've done it, and come back and I'll report to the board the information, and, you know, if the stakeholders, which is everybody involved, wants to do something, then they can go ahead from there.
So, you would be doing a small committee report back to us?
Yeah, it would just be, you know, one from each of the departments, you know, just as long as Mr. Sullivan's okay with it on his end, and the districts, I've already spoke to, I see the people from the Prudential Committee all the time, and they've actually gone to the meeting in Rochester, they are interested, so they're more than happy to go. And I'll go ahead and see Ray probably tomorrow from Onze to see if he's interested. It's just, it's a non-committal, it's just, you know, and I think it's the Fire Chief in Duxbury's in charge of all it, and he has an open...
There was an article in the Globe about it.
He has an open invitation for us to come and visit.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have a problem with Mr. Slaven?
No.
No, do we not? Okay, thank you.
I'm okay.
Mr. Scasiotti?
I'll do that over the next couple of weeks and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All set.
There's nothing going on.
Yeah, let's see, the last week of December, or maybe it was next to last week in December, the Redevelopment Study Committee met for the first time. Since then, we've received interesting packages from Town Council containing summaries of how the various redevelopment authorities, organizations, whatever, exist, what the basis for law is, what the powers of each of the different types of redevelopment authorities are, so we're going to be sinking our teeth into that stuff soon.
Excellent, thank you. For my liaison report, I just want to say that I really congratulate Mr. Sullivan and all of his department heads and all of his employees for managing a tough year with many fewer employees, many more demands on the time of all of the people who work for you, and I want to have you let them know on behalf of this board that we very much appreciate what it takes to run this town on minimal funds. Thank you. Bills?
We do have one from Attorney Bowen, let me put the mic on. Yes, we have one from Attorney Bowen, Florif, Richard Bowen, professional services, November 21, 2016 through December 20, 2016, total amount of $15,416.66. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Titlebaum, seconded by Troppiano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, is unanimous. Minutes of November 1st.
Yep, move to approve the minutes of November 1, 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? One of us wasn't here. Alan, you were not here.
Right.
Yep, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, 401. The minutes of December 6, 2016.
Yep, move to approve those.
Is that the day that I stayed?
That was the liquor meeting.
That was the what?
The liquor meeting, licensing.
Oh, okay, we were all here, okay. Motion made, seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, is unanimous. And December 20, 2016.
We were all here, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Okay.
And...
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Wareham. See you next week.